Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021. It's a little past 10 o'clock. We're gonna move right into the consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, October 15th, October 29th, 2021. Approval of claims, October 14th, 21st, 28th, 2021. Approval of minutes, October 12th, 2021. Waits and measures monthly report for September 16th to October 15th, 2021 filed.
Question to approve consent agenda.
Say. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Memorial Opera House artistic service agreements. Commissioner Blaney, go ahead and read through those contracts.
These are all artistic services agreements. Chris Haddad, Stephanie Sainaki, Molly Oros, Nick Dejar- Dejarle. Excuse me if I butcher any of these names. Bethany Borgo, Rachel Lauer, Jordan Romersberger, Stephanie Reader, Anna Anderson, Deborah Haddad, Eileen Trumbekki, Dan Cummins, Linnea Bissett, Jared Coller, Reagan Beckham, Brian Moore, Chris Lonstrat- Lindstrat, and Don Parker. All artistic services agreements with Memorial Opera House.
And go ahead and do the venue rentals too.
And the venue rental agreements, South Shore Orchestra and Chris Haddad.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for the Memorial Opera House artistic service agreements and venue rental agreements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We got some announcements here. We're gonna do a little housekeeping up here for the county. First off, we'd like to honor an individual here that has worked for Porter County Highway Department for 42 years. I think a lot of the folks here in the room that look like Highway Department people are Highway Department people.
I'm glad they dressed up for the occasion.
Yeah, so we'd like to call Jeff Grogan up. And Jeff, why don't you go ahead and just sit right down here in front of the microphone? Yep, bring your wife, you can...
Yes.
I know you have some comments that you would like to make on behalf of your 42 years, so the microphone is yours.
That's almost as old as Jeff.
I don't know about that.
Well, I'll be very brief, but I do have some thoughts. I'm a little nervous right now, so please excuse me. This is a big day for me. And so let me just begin to read my comments, please. First, a good morning to each and every one of you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to express my heartfelt thankfulness concerning my employment here with Porter County Government and the Highway Department. I cannot possibly say or list all the things I'd like to say, but to just mention a few highlights. First, a big thank you to all the past commissioners, beginning with Mr. Mike Ylesworth, Mr. Larry Sheets, and Mr. Bill Carmichael. To all the past and present council, county council members who also helped in any way to promote a good working environment and a way of life for our families. I worked under many superintendents, beginning with the late Mr. Jack Jarvicki, to the present day of Mr. Rich Sexton. I've had many foremen that currently work under Mr. David Wilson. To all the past and present coworkers I've worked with. Many who taught me how to do my job when I was a young man. I came here on August 13th, 1979. I want to say thank you to you commissioners for putting all of us employees first and keeping us, keeping us safe when it came time and making difficult decisions about COVID. Trying to find that balance to maintain our way of life here in Porter County. Thank you for the best benefits and the fairness you've shown to demonstrate your willingness to help us, help your employees and their families. As I close, I must mention my wife Lisa. She has been my rock and my biggest supporter when it came to do my job over the years. All the thousands of prepared lunches and the late night dinners from working overtime. I am very blessed and proud to have been, had this long career here with you and the people of Porter County. I've done my best and now I look forward to retirement. But before I close, I have one final thing to mention, which is the most important in my life and I should have been mentioned at the start. And that is that none of this would be possible for you or for me without the love, the grace, and the blessings of my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. I owe him, I owe him a great deal of praise for keeping me safe all these years and especially in the winter seasons. May he bless each, each one of you and your families, the people of Porter County and the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, we're gonna come over here and we're gonna take some photos. First, get this one here. Take some photos with the board. Rich and Jim, come on up too. We want you in this photo as well. Come on over, Jeff. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have another individual that we would like to honor here, Porter County. And we'd have Tony Stua, the head of our 911 department, to come forward. Good morning, Ian. Good morning, Tony.
Just give these guys a minute to get back to work.
Good morning, Makayla. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. If anybody wants to get in any Highway Department photos, they're out in the lobby there. Feel free to go out. That's where they're gonna be taking photos, so.
It's good to be here, so thank you very much for the time.
Yep.
With COVID going on in the past, we haven't had a chance to bring dispatchers in for some of the lifesaving awards for children awards. And we are very lucky to have a dedicated crew of dispatchers that really want to perform their best for Porter County. Makayla here is one of our certified training officers as well as dispatchers, trying to teach new people coming in. And she exemplifies what we want in our dispatchers, to take care of residents who are in distress. In September, September 24th, she took a call of a resident, his wife was about to give a child, had childbirth right there, third trimester, very distraught and erratic, and she calmed him down, gave him the directions and how to get his wife on the floor to where the child would not be born in an incorrect position at the time. And she was on the phone with him, cleaning the child up, making sure that the building was tied off. Doing a great job. I think she's an amazing dispatcher that we have. We want to make sure we can come up here and show what the dispatcher is doing. Since we're now in the new building, with the help of the commissioners and council and everyone in the county. So Makayla, like I said, in for as well. You know, she's a woman of few words and she is very diligent and very dedicated on the home.
So now she has nothing to say.
Yeah. I'm shy.
Yeah.
Did you get to meet the parents?
No. All I know is it was a girl.
It was a girl.
Looks like the water just broke. Next thing you know, baby was coming, so.
Sorry about that.
Well, I think I can talk for the other two commissioners. It's one of the things we have, can lose sleep about. Thinking, making sure people are on the other end of those 911 calls. And we feel very confident in the work that all of you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
It really does take, you know, and I know this is thrown around, you know, abuse sometimes, but it really does take a special type of person to do that job.
Yeah, it's tough, but rewarding.
Yeah, that was a good one.
Yeah.
Happy ending.
Yep. Let's get a photo with her. We're gonna go do this one more time. We have one more that's not on the agenda. That's because we found this out last week. But is Mike Novotny here? Mike, why don't you and Amanda come up? Good morning.
Good morning.
So I think Mike has some pretty good news for Porter County Stormwater Management Department.
I sure, I sure do.
And why don't you, why don't you tell the good news?
Yeah, so last week, the Indiana MS4 Partnership, which is a consortium of other MS4s from across the state, regulators, vendors, manufacturers, it's a, it's a big working group. It works together to improve the state's water quality as well as meet the EPA's NPDS municipal stormwater program requirements. Their annual meeting was last Tuesday. And at that annual meeting down in Indianapolis, our stormwater program won not one, but two awards. One, recognizing our program as an outstanding MS4 program. And then recognizing the contributions that Amanda Vandenover's made to our program as our MS4 coordinator, as the outstanding MS4 coordinator in the state of Indiana. So we're very humbled, but very proud to have received this, these awards. It reflects, at this point, more than five years of hard work that the Stormwater Management Board and our staff have put into building this program. And it's nice to get the recognition from, from our peers.
Mike, real briefly, would you just, for the record and the audience, let, let people know what the MS4 permit actually is?
Sure.
And how it sort of is our guiding light?
Yeah.
In a lot of our stormwater development.
I think so.
The five-year permit.
Can I turn it over to our?
Yes, our, our award winner, yes.
I think the easiest way to explain it is that we have six goals that we really want to reach. And the first two are public education and outreach. We want to engage the public and let them know about stormwater quality and how important it is and how they can have an impact. I also search for Alyssa Discharges, which means there are possibilities of bad water getting into our natural waterways that we want to prevent. There is construction inspection and post-construction inspection, making sure that any land improvements that we conduct or, or approve are actually done appropriately and not causing any more detriment to the environment. And then six is making sure that our in-house garages and any of our workings are also being responsible. So managing all those is, is a lot of work, but it's rewarding and it's not possible without a good team. So I'm very thankful.
Good. And the MS4 permit is...
Yeah, so it's...
Tell how, how we, how it affects Porter County.
Absolutely. So the NPDS program, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, is part of the Clean Water Act, Section 402 of the Clean Water Act. One of the requirements of that part of the act is that all designated MS4 communities, and MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, requires MS4 programs, designated programs, to develop programs that meet the six measurable goals that Amanda just spoke about. So it's, it's, it's a roadmap, it's a guideline, but it's also requirements that we have to strive to achieve and continually improve upon to improve the, the quality of the counties, the states, and really the nation's waters. All working towards that primary goal of the Clean Water Act, which is visable, swimable, and drinkable water for everyone in the U.S. So we take a lot of pride working not only on those drainage and flooding issues, but also on the water quality and environmental quality side of things. So this is a great, great honor. We're, we're very happy to have been, again, been recognized by our peers downstate.
Fantastic.
Congratulations. Photo time.
All right, one more time.
One more time, and then we'll get, get going.
Let's just start off the meeting that way.
Okay, now we're gonna get into the commissioners' section of the agenda. The first one that's on the proclamation number one, we are gonna, we're gonna pass on that one. The folks that were going to come in front of us and talk about this came down with food poisoning and couldn't make it today. So we're gonna get them next month and... Or we, we should just do it? Okay, that's fine with me. Yeah, I guess it's November, so. We have a proclamation by the Porter County Board of Commissioners proclaiming November Pulmonary Hypertension Awareness Month.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Yes.
Next, next week, the week after next, we're gonna be displaying purple, which is the color for...
That, on the building. Thank you, Kurt. All right, next up, we have a healthcare group, mental health needs assessment with a concentration on suicides. This is the study that we had been talking about and working through. And any comments or questions on the agreement? Or Attorney McClure, do you have anything to add or? Nope?
Just, yeah, I'm glad we're at this point that, you know, we're, we're gonna kick off this study. I think the scope of the project is reflective of how deep we're gonna dig into this. I think I can speak for the other two commissioners that the purpose of this study is to make a difference, to improve the problem. And I promise you, we will do that. That's all I have.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on a healthcare group, mental health needs study assessment with a concentration on suicides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, GIS insurance. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
Wyatt. I love it. I'm only saying that because I feel it's a great mustache.
You worked with Mark long enough, he rubs off.
All right. Well, good morning. If you recall, a few years ago, we recommended appraisals for the county buildings as per our risk assessment and found out they were substantially underinsured. We have some new buildings and some pretty major renovations that have recently been completed. So we wanted to make sure they were appraised at their proper values as well. Liberty Mutual offers this as part of their, to their municipal clients, so there's no charge involved. And then based on the appraisals, Matt has the results of those.
Yeah, you should have a copy of the report in front of you. We don't need to go through that page by page, but there were four locations, the North County Annex. Had the expansion of the main building, along with some renovations, and a whole new building. And then the former police substation is now a highway substation on West 700. And then the 157 Franklin Building had significant renovations. So those were the four locations that myself, Ray Cloyde, and the appraiser went to back in August. And we came out to about $4.7 million, just under, an additional value that the appraiser found in terms of building and content values. So if we go ahead and approve this to insured value on those effective today through the end of the policy term, which is April 10th, 2022, that would be a prorated additional premium of $2,457.
And we recommend that we approve the new values.
The expo is already insured. But they, the improvements and stuff, it just, you know, but it's already covered. Yeah. 157.
157.
Yeah.
Right.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second on the acceptance of our insurance appraisals of 3560 Willow Creek, 3590 Willow Creek, 326 West 700 North, and 157 Franklin Street in Valparaiso. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. And then what's up next here? That's both of them. Oh, we should have done both, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
We could have done both. What, we need to, we need to go ahead and approve the proposal on the increase too, not just the upset, the appraisals.
Motion to approve the increased insured value at $2,457.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the increased insured value of those appraisals. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Good to see you. Next up, we have a resolution of the Porter County Board of Commissioners canceling property tax assessed against real property owned by a political subdivision, i.e. Portage pursuant to the code shown on the agenda. Attorney McClure, you want to give us the recap on this here?
Yes. What routinely happens is that when a municipality buys a piece of real property, the designation of that becoming non-taxable in government occurs one time a year. And in the process of purchasing, you normally have less property tax to pay the year. And arrears, you come across this issue. So this particular code section in the code, 61137, 367, allows for this to happen when we're dealing with our municipalities here in the county. And again, this was in the normal course of, I believe, the redevelopment commission purchasing property.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second on a resolution of the Porter County Commissioners canceling property taxes assessed against real property owned by a political subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an animal control and animal shelter services contract between Porter County Board of Commissioners in the following cities and towns. We have the town of Couch for $2,400 and we have town of Burns Harbor for $2,000. Throw that to the floor for action.
Motion to approve both contracts, one with the town of Couch and one with the town of Burns Harbor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have a request to approve the 2022 Commissioners' meeting schedule. Throw that to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second on the Commissioners' meeting schedule for 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. We also, next up, we have a request to approve the 2022 holiday schedule.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for the holiday schedule for 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have John Snyder, the assessor. Good morning, John.
Good morning, guys.
Were we able to find it?
No. So we have a little issue this morning. We did put this ratio study that we ask for every year, we put it out for bid, like we were supposed to, and the bids were due in, I think, yesterday. And we had one come in, but the dog ate it and we can't, we can't locate it. It was checked in via certified mail and everything, but it never made it to our office. So we've been scrambling, trying to find it, checking with every office. And it's just, it's gone, so. But we only had one submitted, so Scott, I don't know what can be...
We have to go to the next meeting.
Okay.
We don't even have the physical document itself at this point on the one bidder.
We keep digging or have them resend? Is it? Can we, Scott, can we have them resend? Or do we have to open it up again?
We need to try to find it first.
Okay, find it. We'll keep doing that. I'm sorry to waste time this morning.
Oh, hey, we came for, we needed an answer, so.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, John.
No problem, okay.
If you find it, raise your hand. Yeah, come on back. Thanks, John.
Next up, IT. Lee Childress. Morning, Lee.
Good morning.
Looks like you got some transfers here. Give us the lowdown.
Well, the lowdown is this past year, we've had several vacant periods of time where people weren't employed in their positions, which left us a surplus in the budget fund. So I would like to use that and move it to our data processing line items so we can spend it.
Do we, do we need to do, we need to do these separately? We can do them together.
Motion to approve both transfers.
Yes.
And Lee, why don't you give us a recap on the second one before we vote?
The second one is we use Duo as a secondary authentication to prove who you are when you're at home, working remotely. And the cost for that is gonna cause a shortfall because of the number of people using that. So I'm transferring the 300 and semi dollars just to cover that to the end of the year.
So that's the two-factor auto...
That's correct.
Authentication. Yeah, okay.
And it was more than usual.
Correct.
Yeah, correct. Okay, we, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Highway Department. There he is, over there. Hey, Rich.
Morning, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Alright, good to hear. Just to give you an example, I'm 37 years old and Jeff Grogan has worked here for 42 years. So, he's worked here five years longer than I've been alive, I thought, I think that's a pretty good time that he's worked here, so, yeah, it's just lots of change to.
Well, you can tell he's a central figure in that department. There's no question, so, he's gonna be missed.
He has a lot of respect from a lot of the, a lot of the workers down there, so, including myself.
So what do you got here, looks like we got an additional?
Yeah, these are the money that we moved earlier this year to pay for the CCMG. I'm just moving to the right account to pay, to finish paying out, the CCMG will be seeing the invoices soon from Milestone, so. That's all, this is just a movement in the right spot.
For the audience, that's the community crossings grant.
Paving?
Yes, the paving of, yeah.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for a request for additional appropriation. This is Fund 9400 in the amount of $804,000, account 2362 by Two Minus. Additional money needed to pay invoices for community crossing grant paving projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then we have a request to transfer funds and, and. There's two of those, one on the second page. One is, one transfer is for 200,000.
That's, again, to follow up with the necessary money to pay for the remaining CCMG product invoices and projects that we've been doing.
We have a motion and a second to approve two transfer funds for the Highway Department. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Rich.
Alright.
We did, we did two and three together.
Alright.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Development and Stormwater Management, we have Bob Thompson and Mike Novotny, the county engineer, in front of us.
Like usually does, follow me and pick up everything.
Okay, we have an ordinance, first up, we got an ordinance regarding zoning map amendment. RR Rural Residential to IN Institutional District, the petitioner is Union Township High School, and this is second reading.
A motion to approve on second reading.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have an ordinance regarding zoning map amendment. OT Office and Technology District 2, R4 Multiple Family Residential. Petitioner is St. Andrews Development LLC, this is also second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
We have a motion and a second on an ordinance regarding zoning map amendment. OT Office and Technology District to R4 Multiple Family Residential. Petitioner, St. Andrews Development. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then the next one, we got an ordinance regarding a zoning map amendment. This is RR Rural Residential to A1 General Agriculture. The petitioner is Cosmos Midnight Stables, and this is second reading as well.
Motion to approve on second reading.
We have a motion and a second on a zoning map amendment for Cosmos Midnight Stables, second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have Lockmiller Group. What do we got here, Bob, for this one?
Hey, this is Bridge 1016, it's the US Steel Bridge that crosses over US 12 and two railroad tracks, CSX and South Shore. This is for doing work to get contracts going for rehabilitation work on this. This is, this bridge is, has a MSE wall section that has been broken out for a number of years now. So we'll be fixing that, but we're also noticing that our approaches are sliding a little bit with some of the MSE walls, so it's shoring it up, it's a major rehabilitation on this bridge. One of the things that we are gonna take the time doing on this, since it's almost 20 years old, is checking the deck out. When you get around 25 years in age for a deck, it's usually time to redo it. And that, grind it down and put a new polymer overlay. So we're gonna go in and do some non-destructive testing with this contract to determine how that deck is and what type of overlay we need to put on it, whether it's a thin or if we have to do some grinding and putting in about a two-inch polymer overlay on this.
You guys thinking that the way the buttresses are performing there, is that what's moving the approaches? You think they're tied together or?
Possibly, the, the approach is separating, and we do know on one area that the MSE wall is kind of coming out a little bit on this, so, they are usually tied in with straps going back in with the compacted soil on these. So, I mean, it's gonna be an examination of what exactly is happening there.
We have a motion and a second for Lockmiller Group. This is a task order for engineering services for Bridge 1016 over US Highway 12. That's the US Steel Bridge into Portage. The amount not to exceed $60,560. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is for SEH. This is a supplemental agreement for professional services pertaining to Bridge 150.
We are stuck in environmental review on this. And it's, it's gotten rather significant on this, and I've sit in on the calls on a number of these things. It's going down to the Cultural Resources and INDOT to review on this. What the situation is, is in the northwest corner of the bridge, there is a home that's eligible to be listed on the National Historic Register. It's potential. And so therefore, the concrete block wall that's out in front is an accessory to a potential national historic. So Cultural Resources and INDOT and Federal Highway have been paying close attention to this, so we've been having to go through a number of alternatives to determine what is the best solution for us. Is what we're proposing as far as the bridge the best solution? To the point where they had to give examples of actually tearing this bridge out and just leaving it out. This is 150, it's on Mineral Springs Road over the Little Kaimat River, just south of US 20. So, I, I've been on those calls, I've spoken with the people at Cultural Resources, and, yeah, we're hoping to have this all finished up, the environmental review, and done and approved by Federal Highway by August of next year in 2022. But in that time, the engineer and the subconsultant Cardinal have been putting in quite a bit of time to do this.
Certainly well beyond what we anticipated in the original contract to work through this process, knowing that it's really just a, it's a retained, that's what we're talking about. So we didn't, we didn't anticipate this level of difficulty with regards to get through this process.
Yes, I mean, this, this whole process is pushed back this letting two years for this bridge. It was supposed to be let along with our other two bridges that we have going on Smoke Road and up on Brummett Road this year. Matter of fact, I think it was this month that it was supposed to be let. Because of the environmental review that we're going through, I've been working with Glenn Peterson of SEH on this, and we're estimating that we need a January 2024 letting on this, because we, we haven't even begun right away acquisitions and appraisals on this, so.
Is the bridge still open for use?
It is still open, and our consultant just this past inspection knocked down the weight limit on it. From like, no, it's, it's at 12, I think, but they knocked it down from 16 or 14 down to 12. So it's not in good condition.
How much traffic does this bridge get?
Not a lot. Not a lot, but it, it still is one of the three ways to get into the town of Porter. And town of Porter, to get into their downtown, how do you get into it off of 20, three bridges? And this is probably the least used one, but it's still important to the town.
Well, hopefully we'll get some good news.
Yes.
And can, and can keep moving forward. Do you think that if we get some type of approval, if it were positive, would, would, would the timeframes compress then? Or do you think we're still?
Potentially, I mean, we're looking at right away acquisition, we always predict is gonna take about a year on that, we just don't know. So, I mean, working with the INDOT prime project manager, he always tells, tells me, you know, plan on a year. So, I mean, if we do finish it up early, yeah, we can probably call up INDOT saying, we're ready, we wanna go. So, I mean, that's always a possibility, yes.
And you have weather.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for a supplemental agreement for professional services pertaining to Bridge 150 for SEH. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, INDOT, this is an LPA agreement for Bridge 1007. And that's the big one, Central Ave over Willow Creek.
Yes, this is working along with the city of Portage on this. This is our Central Avenue relocation that they're doing, the west part from Willow Creek West towards County Line. On this, they are relocating the bridge on, or the road and the bridge in this proposal, which, we were looking at that bridge anyway, and it needs to go. We need to rebuild it, it's just probably one or two inspections away from being, having us being told that it's on a yearly inspection. So, with this, what this agreement does is it's pulling in $726,000 of federal funding on this, which we originally did not have, have. So, Structure Point worked on that, was able to get that for us, so this is a good thing. And this bridge is probably going to be let in March of next year. Lengthwise, I wanna say the proposal's probably going to get to 60 or 70 feet in length. Because generally, everything we're seeing, right now, the abutments are right at the edge of the wall. Alright, excuse me, the, probably the ordinary high water mark of Willow Creek. And with any bridge that we're working on now, we're, the hundred-year storm passing underneath it, we're finding that these lengths are going up and we're actually sloping the ditch banks and getting away from having the abutment walls right at the edge of the creek. So, it is lengthening. But I wanna say it's in the neighborhood of 60 to 70, forgive me, I saw this set of plans yesterday and I just didn't. It's estimated at about $1.2 million.
Bridges aren't cheap.
No.
No, 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 not important. Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for INDOT. It's an LPA agreement for Bridge 1007. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then, up next, SEH again, what do you got, Bob?
This is for the Marquette Trail, Marquette Greenway Trail, excuse me, or the Kaimat Trail as we were talking. This is our missing link. We have federal highway funding that is on the very west end, Mineral Springs up to the Dune Park Train Station, and then we have it on the very east end, starting at County Line or Michigan City's Singing Sands Trail, and coming back to the west on this. So this agreement is looking at that actual middle section that we have left of the Marquette Trail and, and going forward with doing the engineering on this. We are also working now on putting in a next level trails grant. We sat down with Glenn Peterson with SEH on this to discuss this, myself and also Rafi Wilkinson with the National Park Service. We sat down and had a meeting just last week about discussing going forward and our alternatives that we have.
And this is not only the missing link for Porter County, but for Northwest Indiana, right?
Yes, yes. This is a part of the connection that goes basically from New Buffalo, Michigan, all the way into Chicago.
About nine miles, right, in total?
Yes.
Yep, and we're gonna be utilizing some National Park Service roads. And we're also gonna be going off-trail, we'll be going back onto the roads.
Right.
It's gonna be, we're working with the National Park Service on that, but it should be pretty, pretty nice trail.
Yes, yes.
And we're trying to leverage, the state has community, they have grants for trails, so that's why we're trying to get our professionals on board so we can submit the, our request for some match dollars from the state. So, that's what this is for.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for a proposal for professional services for Porter County's section of the Marquette Greenway Trail. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then last, Title IV Implementation Plan.
Yes, Title VI Implementation Plan.
Title VI too?
What this is, is our nondiscrimination policy. We have to have a Title VI and also an ADA plan in place with INDOT to be able to receive federal highway funding on that. INDOT did notify us back in early September or late August about the fact that we needed to update our Title VI on that and look at ADA as well. And all of this is to be able to continue getting federal highway funding on this. So what you have before you is the updated version of our Title VI. Believe the last one that was done was with the former Highway Engineering Group that we have with Ray Riddell down there on this. What basically we are lacking in this is, INDOT says, is education of all of our staff and employees on our nondiscrimination policies, and we're gonna have to, I'm working with Rhonda on that, as far as putting up a brochure and also a policy for, or an education plan going forward on this. There's a number of other policies we have to have in place. There's gonna be the nondiscrimination disclosures that you all will be signing with this. We also have to provide forms at meetings in our offices for limited English proficiency is one of them. And we also have to have surveys out at our board meetings to be able to get a demographic of the people that are attending our board meetings here. So, there's a number of issues that we have to do, and we have to constantly be able to do a work plan in place yearly on that and report progress to INDOT and Federal Highway on this. Yes. Correct. It's, the form, yeah, the form is in there that we have to do.
This is all being required by the Highway Department?
INDOT.
INDOT, okay.
And Federal Highway. That particular survey that we're talking about, it, it does state right up in front, it's voluntary.
Oh, federal.
But it's flowing through INDOT.
It flows.
It flows through INDOT, since INDOT is considered the manager of the federal highway funding for the state.
We have a motion and a second for Title VI Implementation Plan update. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have a request for the use of the northeast and northwest corners of the courthouse grounds on Saturday, November 6th, from 3:00 to 6:00, for a peaceful medical freedom protest, anti-mandates, freedom of speech, and right to work. A Bluetooth-controlled speaker will be used. Throw that to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Anybody wishing to address this board? And with that, oh, we got someone, come on up.
Right here where the mic that got knocked off by Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, my name is Reagan Smedley. I live at 2300 Wicklow Drive in Valparaiso, Indiana, and I'm 14 years old. In 2014, the Memorial Opera House became my, like, home away from home. Since then, I spent countless hours there at rehearsals or volunteering in any way I can. I've been in 10 productions there so far, including 15 more at all around northern Indiana. But even though I've worked with many different theaters and companies, the Memorial Opera House has been by far the most elegant and unique. But I've also noticed that after a year and a half unable to do live theatres. But I've also noticed that after a year and a half unable to do live theater, more and more theaters are fading away. The Memorial Opera House has definitely been struggling the past few years with peeling walls, not enough restrooms, um, limited space for rehearsals and storage. Without the, um, needed expansion and restoration, the Memorial Opera House will not be able to provide the community for years to come. I'd like to thank those who support giving us the needed funds for this to happen. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And with that, this board stands in recess.